Meeting will be held remotely with no in-person attendance. Uh, I want to start the meeting with a salute to the flag. At credulization.
To the flag. Of the United States of America. And to the very public where this stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, uh, tonight we're up here, the council's here, we're trying to get this straightened out. I'm gonna ask for no interruptions. We may have questions for you, you people sitting out there, I'm not sure yet, we'll see what happens. Uh, but I just wanna, uh, wanna get to the point and we'll get this, uh, straightened out the best we can. Okay. Uh, where's Michelle here?
She's on her way.
Michelle, you here?
I'm here in spirit.
Okay, alright, great. Uh, you wanna do a roll call?
I'm happy to. Mayor Viglione?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Here.
No?
Yes.
Yeah, here.
Okay. Counselor Angeloni?
Here.
Counselor Diamond? Absent. Counselor Judy?
Here.
Counselor Fornum?
Here.
Here.
Okay. Counselor Gold?
Here.
Counselor Paternoster?
Here.
And Counselor Plicia?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, first, I guess, and the only thing on the agenda is discussion impossible action on the approval of North Branford High School construction grant application to the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services. Mike, do you have anything?
Ms., Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a, a motion. Resolve that the town council authorizes the North Branford Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and accept or reject a grant for the renovate-as-new project and/or as-new North Branford High School. And it be further resolved that the ad hoc design review committee, per-permanent project committee, build, building committee is designated as the building committee with regard to the renovate-as-new and/or new project at the North Branford High School. And be it further resolved that the North Branford Town Council hereby authorizes at least a, uh, preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the renovate-as-new and/or new project at the North Branford High School after the town council makes a final determination of the scope of the project no later than December 1st, 2020. And be it further resolved that the sum of up to sixty-two million dollars be appropriated through the issuance of bonds to fund the ren- and renovate, uh, as-new and/or new project of the high school.
I'll second it.
Okay. Uh, motion was made by Deputy Mayor Zampiano, seconded by Councilman Plicia. Any discussion?
Yeah, what are we doing?
Can I answer? Uh, basically, the, the purpose of this meeting is to lock in the reimbursement rate and we're leaving the door open to either renovate-as-new or a new high school depending on what the ad hoc committee comes back at. We, we've been told by the state that we have flexibility to change not only the dollar amount for, but also the project along the way as we see fit, but we didn't wanna leave potentially two million dollars on the table, uh, by losing the reimbursement rate. So, this motion is strictly to lock in that reimbursement rate and, you know, try to continue to move the project along.
Why is it up to sixty-two million dollars? After reimbursement, we're not gonna spend sixty-two million dollars.
You have to, and my understanding is you have to, you don't just, in, in the motion, you don't, uh, mention just the rea- just the, the town, the town responsibility, you, you mention the total, uh, project amount is what I've been told.
So, the, the draft application that was sent to us last week, in looking through that, the number that is put into that application is the total cost of the project. So, based on the numbers from the feasibility study, the, um, renovate-as-new project was sixty-one eight. Um, and the build-new was a little bit less than that. So, sixty-two would, would cover right now based on the information that we were given.
When we say appropriating through the issuance of bonds, we really mean appropriate portion plus the town's contribution to the cost of the project.
Right. So, the, the, the funding source, we have to have the local funding source appropriation. So, between the state grant and what we would pay is the total cost of the project.
And within the flexibility that we're accorded to change the project around or renovate or build as-new, do we actually have the flexibility to back away from the project completely?
Yes.
So, we can do anything we want, we're not committing the town any course of action or any expenditure by, by adopting this resolution tonight.
Right, we're solely trying to meet the deadline to maximize our reimbursement rate.
And we've got enough information to file with the state to meet that deadline tomorrow.
That's my understanding.
Well, the, the application that was sent to us, um, the draft application, I, I don't know if anyone else looked through it, but I did. And everything on that application is just for new construction. So, based on our motion, that application would have to be changed, um, to, to cover both projects. And in speaking to the state, they said that that is not uncommon to have the application come in with the di- the different options on there that they would make because the state will look at the project, they will come down, they will do field study, they will walk the site. Um, they will go through with all of the parties involved, meaning council, board of ed, the architect. You know, it's like joint meetings to go through and determine. And since the ad hoc committee just got this project and they just received the, uh, geotechnical reports on Tuesday last week and we got them on Friday, if you read them and you don't even have to, there's some glaring things in that report that tell us that we shouldn't be building on the new site. Um, that, the site that was picked for the new school on there. Um, and I know, um, Al Rose is on that committee and I see he is here. So, I would like to just have him, if you don't mind, Al, just kind of, since you're familiar with this, kind of talk a little bit about that report and things that concerned the committee that were in that report.
Al, Al, before you, before, excuse me, Rose, before you get started, have you guys had enough time to get anything together yet? With what's going on?
Are you with Al or?
Al.
So, you know, we got this last Tuesday and, and really I wanted to go through the geotechnical, um, report, which is...
I'm sorry.
You know, it, it has, um, so, you know, I think most everybody in the room knows that that was a built site. And, and the geotechnical report, you know, proves, proves that or, or, you know, concurs with that. And so, there's lots of groundwater, there's, there's bad fill down to ten B. So, the, um, the type of construction there i- is, would be expensive. Um, and in talking with the architect last week, he said that he had, and, you know, he can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, and he had six million for the site work and the foundation anticipating this. So, so think about that for a moment. Just the foundation, uh, the numbers we're talking here, which, you know, isn't a huge number for building a new school. Six million of it is, is the, uh, site work and foundation. And, and it's really because of all the issues that you're gonna deal with. And, and the other thing is, you know, I've done this a long time and I've actually had to do all types of these foundations along the shore. Um, you know, they're very expensive and, and you're, uh, you know, we're not sure what we're gonna have here until you actually get into it, you know? So, what I had said to some of the counselors and, and actually to, I had a conversation with Marcy and Al Creo, I said, "That site would be the last place you would put a school." The last, you know, you, you would have no other option before you would wanna go over there and, and, you know, try and deal with what's there. So, that may be where we land, um, because, uh, you know, and like, we've only had two meetings. So, we haven't looked at the whole site, we, I, I know Randy and myself have come up with some ideas, but, you know, again, we've only had two meetings and we just got this last week. And, and in looking at this, you know, I, I would not recommend building a school on that site. But, you know, could it be done? Absolutely. You know, we could do it, but we're gonna have the same, you know, we're, we're in serious trouble. There's ground, there's lots of groundwater there at four B. So, it's the same water that's underneath the existing high school right now. So, we just wanna be real careful and that's all we're trying to do is a, is our ad hoc committee is make sure that, that we don't end up with another intermediate school. And then we don't build, we don't just go blindly into this. Um, and that's why I think we were born, to, to take a look at all this stuff and figure out, you know, what, what we should do and, and why. But, um, there's, uh, so I haven't had the chance to look everywhere else. I know, you know, maybe the board of ed and the architects did, but our committee hasn't had that chance to, to see if there isn't any other thing we can do over there.
That's my main concern, is to get this done right, I'm kinda worried about what you're just talking about. I don't wanna mess up, uh, have this place fall apart in twenty years. We don't need that, we don't need the same thing we have now. I, I think we should let you guys do what you're supposed to be doing and let us know what the best, the best thing to do is. That, that's how I feel about this.
I think that's why it's important that the motion was made the way it was made because it gives us options. And because we don't have, we're still waiting on a lot of information. We still don't have enough information to intelligently make a decision as to what to do or where to put it. By making the motion the way we did, it leaves the door open, it gives us options moving forward, but it also locks in the rates so that we don't leave money on the table.
I have a question. We were at the meeting at the middle school in January, February, I lose time. My question is, why does it take us the day before June thirtieth to come up with something like this? We have February, March, April, May, now the day before we do it, now we have a meeting to discuss this. Um, why, why weren't we proactive a little sooner, I guess?
You're on the council too, why didn't you make the motion?
Well, I can, I, I, no, no, I can, I can answer that, Lou.
I mean, that's not an answer, by the way.
No, no, Lou, Lou, it's a good question.
What I appreciate is the answer.
You made a good, it was a good question. We are under the, we are under the impression we had more time that, according to our state representative, that we had more time, but come to find out, we don't have more time. We have to hit the deadline. That, that, that's, that's, it's that, it's that simple, Lou.
Thank you for the answer.
I mean, that, that's, that's the information that we received.
Yeah, that's what, that's what happened. He's, he's absolutely right.
That, that's justified answer, that's all I'm saying.
What happened, what, what brought it about was, I, I called Vinnie a few days ago and said, "Vinnie, what's the story on the, the funding?" And, um, I said, "You led us to believe, or you, you said we may have till November." And he did a lot of research on it up in Hartford and he got back to me and he said, "You know what? June thirtieth might be the date you, um, you better look for." And that was on the twenty-eighth or twenty-seventh. And I called Michael and I explained it to Michael, what Vinnie told me. And, um, I said, "You know, we better get a meeting together." And, uh, Michael called Bob, Bob said, "Yeah, um, let's get a meeting together for the twenty-ninth." And that's the reason we're sitting here on the twenty-ninth. Um, because time was running out and we wanted to take advantage of the maximum reimbursement, which could be up to two million dollars, and that was a little too much to leave on the table. So, we put this meeting together and we came up with the resolution and that's why we're sitting here tonight.
Well, and, and, and part of it is also, we just got the geotechnical report that was done. So, the ad hoc committee got it on Tuesday, the board of ed had it at their June meeting, the ad hoc committee got it on Tuesday, and we just got it on Friday.
Yeah, I understand that, Rose, but I'm just saying from January, February, why weren't, anything, according to him, I'm on the council, I agree. Why didn't we pursue it a little sooner than when we did? That's my question. And I'm trying to say, there was a lot of la- of lag time before we got to this, that's all I'm saying.
Right, and the geotechnical report came from the board of ed side.
Okay.
So...
Perfect, thank you for your answer.
So, so, once they went through with Rusty, they voted in April and according to the schedule that they had gotten from the architect and said, "Here's the steps you need to take," the geotechnical report was scheduled as soon as what was on the agenda and unfortunately, it just, it just came back.
Who puts this application together for tomorrow?
I believe the architect, the board, it gets submitted from the board of ed.
But it's going to be formatted and prepared by the architect?
I believe that's where the draft came, that, that we were sent. Did that come from you, Rusty?
Yeah, I edited the drafts. Um, it's based on the state application, it's on the state website.
Mm-hmm.
So, those, all those questions, all the, the requirements come from the state. Um, and so, what we, what I had done is handwritten in what the responses need to be, um, and then...
And you've done these before?
Oh, yeah.
Can, can I just interject? Rusty, can you offer clarification on the motion that was made as a renovate-as-new versus a new building? And please elaborate on the difference between the two? And that there's no way that we would be able to put a renovate-as-new package together in twenty-four hours? Because we've, we've done it as a new building, which was the charge of the board back when the motion was made for a new high school. And, and secondly, that the, the borings and the environmental studies are really a second phase of the building project. We did them earlier and got them out of the way, but, but in reality, they're usually done in the second phase of the project. The first phase is the funding source and the acceptance of the governing body to say X amount of dollars to move this project forward. And then you go and you do the borings, then you go and do the environmental studies. We, we've, we've done it, you know, we've put the, the card before and we use board monies to go and do those additional studies outside of the fifty thousand dollar feasibility study. So, we've incurred costs out of this year's budget that should be done in the next phase of whatever we were deciding to do. For clarification.
Yeah, Scott, I don't think there's anything you have to put together in twenty-four hours.
Yeah, the application has to be put together.
Tomorrow. We have to send it to, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Scott, you know what, I think it'd be best now if Rusty addresses that application because I asked that specific question during the board of education, um, meeting forty-five minutes earlier because we were asking whether we can renovate as-new or do straight renovation. And there seems to be, um, an inability to put a renovate-as-new into this state application. So, maybe Rusty can elaborate on that since that's very specific to the motion on the table.
So, the application itself gives you multiple choices when you go in. You either do a renovation operation, renovate-as-new or new building. The application that we prepared is for a new building. There are specific requirements if you go for renovate-as-new. Uh, you have to do other analysis on the site, on the building itself because renovate-as-new is looking for you to make that building as a, as a big, a new building. Uh, so we would have to do a more in-depth structural analysis of that building. We also have to do a cost comparison, uh, because what the state looks at is whether a new building is going to be, uh, or the ren- renovate-as-new building is gonna be more expensive than, than a new building. Because that's one of their metrics to say, "Does it make sense? Why would you do a renovation if the new building is cheaper?" So, they'll evaluate that as well. So, these are all documents and there are other forms that we have to file. And all that has to happen prior to the submission of the application because the application talks about whether you have received an approval for renovation status at the time you're submitting your application. So, we don't have any of that information i- in, in this package. And there's no way we can get it together for tomorrow. So, if somebody's saying that, okay, you can file it as both options, that's fine. I don't, I've never done that, but, um, and, you know, but if you do that, then you're missing a lot of data. So, I don't know how they'll value, evaluate that and whether that will be an acceptable application. I, I just don't know the answer to that. Uh, as far as I know, it can either go in as renovate-as-new application or you go in as a new application. Now, it's conceivable that you go in on application and then you still continue to evaluate and, and if you change the, your mind and say, "Oh, you know what? Based on all this data, we can, we, we'd rather do a renovate-as-new." Now, you can, you can then deal with, you know, go to the state and make your case to say, "Let's change it to renovate-as-new because of all the data that we pulled, pulled together." They were partners with us in the evaluation process, they met with us when we looked at the three options. Uh, and they were on board with the new option as, as the one that they thought would be best. The other, other consequences of potentially a renovate-as-new, when we got the, when we got our space standards, the auditorium building is not considered an on-space standard. That's thirty-four thousand square feet. Um, the state allowed us to do that because they said it's a, a separate building, it's a new building. Uh, and, and so, we're considered the auditorium part of the, the intermediate school. If you make that a renovate-as-new project and the whole building is connected, we don't know the answer, but they'll still allow us to do that because it's one large connected building. If they don't give us that, that waiver, so to speak, on the auditorium, the impact of that is fairly significant. Because I, I'd heard that you were gonna look at the, uh, renovate-as-new status. I did some calculations to what the impact was. We don't get that, that favor to say you can keep the auditorium still considered part of the, uh, of the intermediate school. Uh, the impact was it would reduce your, your reimbursement down to thirty-eight percent into fifty-three percent. Uh, so, there's a lot of unknowns at this point is what I'm saying. And, and so, I, you know, I couldn't advise you to take that kind of a risk because those are things that we just don't know. We haven't done all our due diligence on those, that aspect of it. We've done the due diligence on all, on the new because that's the direction that everybody hit. You know, since our presentation back in February, that's the, the, the direction we were going. And, and so, that's, we have all that data, we can file that application. So, how we would file an application with both options, I'm, I'm not sure. Uh, we would potentially have to call the state in the morning and see if they allow us to do that. And how, I don't know how, you know, what they would say about the data that we need to provide.
So, I guess part of the concern with going with just new is the site that has been presented for the new school is not desirable based on the geotechnical report. I, I'm just speaking for myself. I personally don't feel comfortable putting it further into the swamp. And when they talk about that you would still, you would need to build it on pilings, you would need to have pumps. We have pumps now in the school and that's what people are complaining about, that you would still need to do that. You're building within a hundred feet, within the hundred foot of inland wetlands. So, you need local approval on inland wetlands. I know you talked about moving the wetlands. There's a lot of ifs on, that would have to happen and I'm still, personally, I'm not comfortable building on that site. So, so if it's not on that site, what is the new site?
Rose, may I speak? I asked that same question, um, during our board of education meeting. Uh, I asked if we were wed to that particular site because I do understand that there is water there and we don't want the kids in another old building or another pond at the bottom of our high school. Uh, we are not wed to that particular site. What we are committed to is a piece of property that the town already owns or the board of education has on. We can build in the sunflower field, we can build on the football field, we can build in the parking lot. We can build anywhere because that application does not specify a site. What we would need to do, and I'm gonna guess that Al would be leading the charge in doing additional boring, finding where the best spot to build the school is. You know, maybe it is the parking lot, maybe it is the sunflower field, maybe it is the football field. I can't tell you that because I know nothing about borings. Um, but we're not wed to that particular site. And by voting on this, it's not saying we have to vote there, you're just, we would just be voting on new construction.
Right. So, based on that, which I totally understand that, based on the email that was sent to us on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, about an additional site, you know, a different site, the estimates, and these are very conservative, and these came from Rusty when Scott sent us the email, says that you're looking at an additional five million dollars and most of it being ineligible cost. So, there's another whole new factor that we don't know about. It's another if on top of all the ifs that we have now because we don't have enough information. So, in talking to the state, that is why they suggested that we do the, that we do the renovate-as-new and new. You have both options. If the renovate-as-new doesn't work, you have the new option and we have to deal with it. And if there is no site that we come up with, that we all agree on, and at what cost? I mean, those are all figures that we get after the fact, but we have time to do that. The main thing is, is that we have to have a decision made before December first because it has to, in December is when it goes on the priority list that's presented to the governor. So, we have between now and December to gather our information, have collective meetings between the board of ed and the town council to discuss all of this and come up with a plan as to, is it renovate-as-new? Is it new, is it new on the swamp? Is it new some, on some other piece, on the high school site? Is it some other piece of land that the town owns on there?
Can I speak to the five million dollar email? I wasn't on that, I don't think, so I would like to hear more detail on that.
Um, here's the email that we received. Um, that was forwarded to us, um...
Did I forward it?
No, Scott.
I was kidding, I don't remember a five million dollar additional cost, so I would love to...
Scott, Scott forwarded it to us on June twenty-fifth at one twenty-five PM. So, that's when we got it. And it was from Rusty responding to Scott in this...
Rusty, did you get to that email?
Certainly, yeah. So, part of the cost that I, I enumerated in there in terms of the fact that we did look at various sites, various locations on the existing site. So, we looked at the North Park and Lot, uh, we looked at the, uh, tennis courts and then, of course, the third site was where, where the existing fields are. And there were lots of educational discussion about what's appropriate, what we can live with, how we can, uh, locate the building and school in a way that the auditorium and the, the athletic, uh, fields, et cetera, can be utilized by the, by the school. So, because we brought up the, what, what if we did it off-site, a different location? And one of the compelling reasons was, well, if you did that, then you'd need some fields in that location. You'd need an auditorium in that location, otherwise you'd be busing the students to a location. And I'm talking about a location off this particular site. So, that cost included, you know, building that additional square footage for the auditorium for, for other program functions that are shared, uh, additional parking, additional site work, not knowing what the site is and what the site utilities are. We had to make some kind of an assumption on the site. So, those are the types of things...
Right, that's all filled out in your email.
That drove the, the number there.
Rusty, let me clarify. So, the extra five million dollars, if it, if it's, the site is off the campus, if the site is still within the campus, the fifty-five acre campus, that five million dollars does not pertain.
That's correct.
So, the five million dollars is only if it's not on fifty, on the campus. It's like if we moved it to Totucket Valley, the high school to Totucket Valley, or a piece of property across town. So, I just wanted to give you clarification.
Well, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be across town, it can just be on the other side of Mill Road.
No, I asked that question this morning. If it's anything that's considered a campus and we can use the field and we can use the auditorium, that five million dollars does not pertain. Am I correct, Rusty?
Right, because you're now within, where, a, a distance where the students can, you can have access to the existing facilities. Uh, when I was talking about, uh, an alternative site, it's one that's away from this, that it's, you know, for the students to, it's not, uh, practical for the students to walk from that particular location to the auditorium.
Well, I, I, I don't think it would be if it, let's say it's Mill Road, just on the other side, whatever town property. I don't think the students would be walking anyway.
And, and that's...
Because that's, I mean, that's too far. When you're, when you're talking town campus or the school campus, I'm assuming you're talking from the parking lot and the football field, like that's... talking from the parking lot and the football field, like that section up to Route Eight. Is that the section you're talking about for the fifty-five acres?
Ideally, but if you have, and it's all a function of what the board of education and the educators feel, feel is reasonable and does it make sense for the students to walk back and forth because there are schools where the athletic facilities are remote from...
Correct.
From, from the school itself. But that, that number that I was putting out there is that if you had to build all those facilities at another site. In this case, if you had it proximate enough, you wouldn't be building those facilities so that cost would be, you know, you wouldn't have that cost. You also know what your utilities are because it's right there adjacent to the existing site. So, and, and again...
But it's still a big unknown because we don't know. And, and there could definitely be additional cost, it might not be all of these that are listed here because if it was where the sunflowers are planted, I can't imagine we would build new tennis courts and a new stadium over there because it's right across the street and there's a lot of towns that, they're not right on campus, you know, it's a short distance. So some of these things, as I read it, I knew we would not do if it was there, even if it was on the other side of town, because there's been sports that don't play, that haven't played at the high school for years, that have, their field is someplace else and they've been bussed. So that was not a factor in there. But the, the point is, is that there's additional cost if it's moved someplace else. Right now, the only information that we've been given is based on building it on the swamp. So, so that's why the state suggested that the application read for both of them, renovate as new and new. You have, you can still do the same thing, we can gather all of our information still from, have the ad hoc, they just got this, they've had two meetings, they're, they're on a very aggressive schedule of meeting every other week to get information back to us on here. So that, that's why the motion was that way, is to include both of them.
Okay. I have a motion that was made, a second. Michelle?
I have one more question about the town. I just want to be sure, we're, we're, I want to be clear because we renovate.
Standby, Michelle.
Okay? I just want to be clear that whatever I cast my vote, I'm not committing to one or the other.
No.
We're going to, we're going, the, the school, new school's available.
Right.
Renovate is available.
Yep.
And we're going to do what's best interest of that property.
Yes, that, that's exactly, that's exactly right.
The, the motion is basically to lock in, yeah, lock in the reimbursement rate.
He read a lot, I just want to put my...
Because the state requires four resolutions.
Nope, we're good.
In that...
Thank you.
Yeah, the whole reason for this meeting is the lock in the maximum reimbursement rate. That's it. We're not deciding on schools, property, locations, nothing, it's just...
I got it, thank you.
Michelle, can I have a vote, vote call, please?
Scott's.
Mayor Viglione?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano?
Yes.
Yes, that was yes.
Thank you. Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Duty?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
That was yes.
Yes? Okay. Councilor Gold?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Paternoster?
Yes.
And Councilor Policia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Next I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Michael, who seconded that?
Joe Fawnin.
Joe Fawnin.
Joe Fawnin, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Michelle.